First, for prayer, we have Pastor Bobby Williams. Bobby Williams is the senior pastor at The Ridge Church in Oak Ridge. He also is the head coach at the Clinton Middle School for the boys' basketball team. And followed by that, we will have Leon Jacquet, who will lead our pledge. Thank you.
Let us pray. Father, we are so grateful and thankful, Lord, to come to you in prayer, God, to have the opportunity to be able to speak to you, Father, and have you speak to us, Lord. And God, we pray and ask just that in this moment, God, of meeting, Father, that you speak, God, that we are able to hear, and God, that you grant courage, God, to make the right decisions, Father, God, to be light in this county to all who call this place home, Father, God, the place that you have given to us, Lord. And God, we pray a special prayer, God, for the conflict in Israel, Lord, that you put an end to that conflict in the right way, Father, a peaceful end in your eyes, Father. God, and we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we start Appearance of Citizens, I do want to make a couple of statements. First, we will recognize citizens to speak. However, I want you to be very, I want to be very clear on what is allowed and what's not allowed when we talk. There will be no profanity. There will be no directing any comments at a commissioner. There will be no back and forth between citizens and the commissioner. You do have three minutes. We will give you a warning at 30 seconds, and you will be, it will be a hard cutoff. Additionally, there is no secret in Anderson County that library is a topic of discussion. We have listened to speakers for months now about this topic, and I do not want to silence citizens at all. However, people need to understand that under the state law and their rules, I'm going to start invoking the rule of you're allowed one spokesperson per side because there's each side that can speak on this issue. So what I would like to ask first is who is here to speak on the library issues? Who's here to speak? I should say in favor of keeping the way things are. Okay. I would just ask that one person speak on that side, and then on the other side, that you, that you find someone to speak for your issue. And one more thing I did omit is that the subject of specific books, the reading of such books, anything that contains anything that's inflammatory, profanity, or what some have called obscene, I do not want that read over this body. So anytime that that, if that happens, you will be gavelled and you will no longer be allowed to talk. I just want to make sure that those rules are clear before we move forward. Appearance of citizens. This is for anything that's on the agenda or not on the agenda? If there's...
I didn't hear a word.
This now starts the Appearance of Citizens for anything that's on the agenda or not. Go ahead, ma'am. And when you come to the podium, please state your name and your address.
Good morning. My name is Donna Maloney. I live at 111 Tempera Drive in Oak Ridge, Tennessee. The citizens of Anderson County are entitled to their own opinions. They are not entitled to their own facts. These are the facts. The books that are being challenged have been reviewed per the procedures of the Anderson County Library Board. They were retained in the libraries after consideration by the board and the professional library staff. The books in question do not meet either the federal test for obscenity, also known by the Supreme Court as the Miller Test, nor do they meet the standards set out in Tennessee Code Annotated 39-17-901, as reported by the county attorney, Mr. Yeager, at the library board meeting in Rocky Top a couple of months ago. Book bans are unconstitutional as they violate the First Amendment right to the free exchange of ideas and information. These are the facts. It doesn't matter how many citizens express their displeasure with certain books in our libraries. They don't have to, they don't get to have those materials removed, no matter how many signatures they get, nor how graphic their presentations. Now, last week, Mayor Terry Frank presented some concerns around the library structure to the Anderson County Commission Operations Committee. The Assistant County Attorney read Resolution 08-308 dated August 18, 2008, and it seemed to lay out the employment status of the library staff very clearly. I don't understand the mayor's concerns, but I ask this commission to resolve this issue quickly. I also ask that the status of these libraries be kept as it has been for 80 years. The timing of the mayor's report is concerning to me, and I have to wonder at the motivation.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Adriana Olson. I live in, on Milligan Lane in Clinton. I'm a nurse. I've been accused, because I am standing against these books, of not liking the LGBTQ crowd. I'm a nurse. I've taken care of transgender patients. I've taken care of gay patients. I don't care what your sexual orientation is. It has nothing to do with that for me. This is what is important to me. I do not want her going into the library and being able to go in the little kids' section and seeing these images in a book. I also was in the library the other day, and on the wall in the children's section was a piece that I never want her to be able to see. I am upset. I can't believe collectively, we don't have, it seems like we don't have a brain here in our county anymore, or a heart. Alls I want to do is protect the kids of Anderson County. I love kids. I was a neonatal nurse for 23 years. I will give my life to the kids. My last breath, I will go down protecting kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission?
Chase Lindsey, 109 Elliott Circle, Oak Ridge. Commissioner Mays, my, my topic does touch on the library issue, but it's specifically about the behavior of one of the commissioners.
Yeah, word.
Instead of speaking out loud, can I pass these around? Would that be okay?
That'll be fine.
It's just my comments. Do you mind passing? Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to? Yes, ma'am.
This has nothing to do with the library or the books. My name is Penelope. I live in Oak Ridge, Conner Circle. I was here last week at the Operations Committee meeting, and there was an outburst, and I'd like to address that, not calling anybody out by name. I'd like to read something from a 16th century alchemist. His name is Paracelsus, and he says, "Humans are twofold beings. We have a divine and an animal nature. If we feel, think, and act as divine beings, should act, we are a true human. If we feel and act like an animal, we are then an animal, and the equal of these animals, whose mental characteristics are manifested in us. An exalted imagination, caused by a desire for the good, raises us up; a low imagination, caused by a desire for that which is low and vulgar, drags us down and degrades us. The spirit is the master, imagination the tool, and the body the plastic material." So I appeal to everybody here that we should elevate ourselves and comport ourselves, even if we don't agree with the other side, and that is really specifically to the people here on this commission. Thank you.
So if we're, want to speak regarding the library issue, you can't speak.
Well, like I said at the beginning of the meeting, I am, we have been at this for, for quite some time. The library board has been at this for quite some time, and, you know, under the rules, appointing someone to speak on each side is the rule I'm invoking from this point forward. I mean, if the body wants to, if there's a motion to suspend the rules, that's up to this body, but that's a thing moving forward that, that's the way we should, we should We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Val and a second by Commissioner Yehar. Will you state your motion?
Motion to suspend the rules, Mr. Chairman.
Specifically for?
For more public input on this issue, allow more citizens speaking.
All right, we have a motion. Is that the second for you? Okay, we, can you remove the second, Kobe? So we have a motion on the floor. We have a second, I'm assuming Commissioner Allen, for, we have a motion on the floor. Second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
No.
Can we go to the board for the vote, please? And Kobe, can you allow me to vote? Kishma Val, on you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't know I did that.
You're just wanting the motion, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the motion is to suspend the rules? Four ayes, ten noes, motion failed. Is there any other? Okay, moving on to the approval and correction of the agendas. First, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? We get a motion by Commissioner Wondell, second by Commissioner Yeager. Commissioner Palmer, you're recognized.
I would like to ask to remove the human trafficking minutes, or pull them under C6, under committees and board reports, off of the consent agenda to the regular agenda, C6.
You said human, human trafficking, correct? Commissioner Wondell, are you okay with that?
Yes. Is, are, Commissioner Palmer, are you asking for the whole consent agenda or just that one item?
Just that one item.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else? All are in favor of the amended consent agenda in approval? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. The regular agenda.
Amendment addition I'd like to make, sir.
All right, Commissioner Yeager.
I'd like to add into new business, a change order proposal for the, for the rooms across the hall into new business.
All right. Under new business, change order proposal. Commissioner Wondell, you?
Yes, sir.
Good with that, Commissioner. Any other? All in favor of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. All right, Public Hearing Report, Vice Chairwoman Vandergriff.
We did have a public hearing earlier this morning where we were presented an amendment for the Anderson County zoning regulations to include planned developments in A1 agriculture forestry districts.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to defer to next month and actually put this on operations for discussion, have someone from Planning Commission to come for anybody that don't want to talk about and, and get some more information on this, and say thank you to Commissioner Yeager for coming to the Planning Commission meetings as well.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Isbell, second by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right. Do you have anything else, Commissioner? All right, Presentation of Reports, first, under elected officials, we have County Mayor Terry Frank. Mayor, you can sit, you can stay there if you would like.
You're tired of saying crippled me like Paul up there, aren't you? All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on the agenda is, years ago during a planned resurfacing of Clinton Highway, we had some proposals by TDOT for safety improvements. This took place as a result of some conversations between the Sheriff's Department, Tennessee Highway Patrol, myself and others. Some of those safety improvements were rejected. We were still able to do some limited ones, and then also, TDOT was able to incorporate some new technology for Beck's Curve, which I think is, has actually done a much better job. It has more of a gripping surface. But after the last wreck that happened, we reached out to Tennessee Highway Patrol to see what are, what are we still looking at along that corridor? And since, a March of 2018, we have had four fatal crashes in that corridor, and then 10 serious injury crashes. And serious injury is defined, federal highway has standards, TDOT pretty much comports with the federal highway, which those are crashes that affect someone's quality of life. It may be, you know, a paralysis, something serious and, and life threatening. And so I was hopeful that just we, you might authorize me to, let's reach out again, maybe there's some other ideas for safety improvements, something else we could do working with TDOT. And so that's the potential motion that I'm asking you to authorize.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Commissioner Allen to authorize the mayor, correct, Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And a second by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Wondell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, I'm, I'm looking at the email you sent, and it looked like one of these accidents wasn't even on Clinton Highway, but I, I guess where I'm trying to come from is, it, in reading the emails, it looks like it was sent to people in the state of Tennessee. Are we talk, are you talking to TDOT? Are you talking to state officials? I just want to try to understand how this conversation began and what, what's going on.
Sure. So after the fatality that took place on Clinton Highway near Shepherd Lane, I guess that was September 26, I asked LeAnn to reach out to the Sheriff's Department or Tennessee Highway Patrol, whoever the appropriate agency is that works the wrecks on that area of Clinton Highway. So Tennessee Highway Patrol is who you actually see on that email address, so I just wanted you to have that that was the agency we got this information from. There's actually, you know, I have, I did not include in your agenda packet, but I can definitely send out to all of commission, all of the crash reports themselves with some of the personal information that's been redacted by the Tennessee Highway Patrol, but I'm happy to send that out. All of those are on that corridor, so if they'll mention, so for instance, Lowenstein Road is right there in that corner that precedes Beck's Curve. Shepherd Lane is, is kind of there. Old State Circle is down a little bit. Now, they are going to be, and the, and the reason this is timely, is they are going to be improving that bridge at Old State Circle, and so they're going to do some work there. So when this wreck happened, my thought processes are, this is a good time to ask them if there are other things, if they're going to be beginning work at Clinton Highway at Old State Circle.
Okay. The only reason I'm asking is, I mean, I, I think the people have spoken about not going to a single lane. I feel like that, and the people, more importantly, felt that was not gonna, it might be safer, but if, Lord forbid, there's an accident on 75 North or South and they start coming down to one lane, there'd be all kinds of problems, and, you know, I'm not sure if we had a concrete wall down the middle of that road, it wouldn't prevent accidents. Some of these accidents are people driving impaired. Some of these accidents are people that might not be looking at the, at the, at the gauges, rather, maybe a cellphone. I don't know, but there's a lot of other factors besides the road, road not being safe. Sometimes it goes down to the driver itself. So I'm in favor of looking at more additional safety precautions. We've had many, many deaths on Edgemore Road, and so I would be interested in seeing the numbers prior to this and comparing it to the prior numbers before the changes were made on the road, so we have a true reflection of, is it safer or isn't it safer? My suspicions are, it's much safer now than it was prior to the recent changes, but I'll certainly stand behind you. If we can do anything to make it safer, I'm all for it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else on the motion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
The next item is the Length of Service Award Program. I'm requesting a motion to authorize the match of $200 per eligible volunteer firefighter or rescue squad member for the Tennessee Department of Treasury LoSAP program for the 2023 State of Tennessee LoSAP grant application. If you'll notice in the agenda packet, these applications were just released on October 9. That's why I did not have the opportunity to bring them through the committee process. Applications are due on November 15. As the participating entity, that's Anderson County, is the authorized participating entity, we will assist the fire departments and rescue squad with the grant application, as well as assisting with understanding the eligibility requirements and record-keeping certification. And I did talk with Randy in Finance about perhaps John Prince helping with these grant applications. They're not very complicated, but there still is some requirements on our side, as well as the fire department's side. Going forward for the length of service, this will become something that we discuss in the annual budget process, but right now, we're just approaching this from this grant opportunity.
Got you. All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Isbell to approve, and a second by Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a real quick, remind me, how many, how many firefighters and rescue squad members would that be? What's the total?
So, it seems like if every single firefighter met the eligibility requirement, going from memory, that number, when I looked about a year ago, was about 178.
Okay.
So we're looking at an exposure of $36,000, but that is if every single firefighter qualified, which, and if each fire department would be participating.
Okay.
So some may not be ready. I mean, this is going to be something that we work with each fire department and through Fire Commission on helping the fire departments manage a roster that includes keeping up with their participation in fires and the training, how many meetings they're going to. Under this grant process, the state is letting the departments just take a, you know, a short window and annualize it. So basically, if they're in one month doing so much training and, and so many fires, they're going to let them participate, and this money will go into that individual firefighter rescue squad's account.
I, I, I remember all of that. I just couldn't remember that, that 178. I remember discussing that. It's early. I just wanted to refresh my memory. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Commissioner McCamey.
Is this an appropriation you were asking for?
Well, it's just to match. So if they, if they get the grant, if they have any eligible firefighters, and then they are awarded the grant, they will get $200 from the state of Tennessee, and so we're committing to match that $200.
Okay, so is there an amount, an amount that you want us to approve today, or what is the actual motion?
The motion is to match the grant application, and so if any of the fire departments end up winning the grant, we'll come back to Budget Committee with what that is, but we'll have the commitment in hand that we committed to match $200.
Okay. Next slide.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
That's the only action item I have, Mr. Chairman. I did insert officially into your packet a thank you letter from the mayor of Oliver Springs thanking County Commission for the contribution for the advancement of fire service, so.
Good. Thank you. Anything else for Mayor Frank? All right. Department heads, Director of Finance Robbie Holbrook. Robbie offered that seat there, and Jay said he'd rather not have you there.
He told me something different.
For the record, that's not true.
I asked you to come here earlier.
I must have misunderstood.
I kind of did. Good morning, everyone. Under the budget agenda, the first item we took on was electing a new chairman and vice chairman, and... Michael Foster's the new chairman. I couldn't remember who it was. Since it only's been one meeting, so he's not here today, but, and we elected Bob Smalver as vice chairman, and I just want to thank Shane Val for, it's been a pleasure working with you the last three years as the budget chairman. I didn't get to do that in Budget Committee, but I do mean that, so, thank you. So the cash and fund balance report, the month ending September 30, 2023, is still unaudited. We are closing audit out this week. Hopefully, I think me and the mayor have a meeting Friday for an audit exit conference, so that should, we should have audited numbers by November, so that's a good thing. Anyway, the general fund line, restricted funds, 1 mil, 1 mil, 1.6 million, committed funds are at 1.3 million. Assigned funds, 3 million, 759, 895. Unassigned fund balance, 10 million, 593, 946, for a total fund balance of 17,337,527. Our cash at the end of September was 13,285, 269 for the general fund, which is about 1.7 million from, up from last year at this time. General Purpose School Fund, 141, their total fund balance, 10 million, 8,821, cash, 6 million, 721. 6 million, 721, 556. Any questions on the cash and fund balance report?
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, I was looking at the general fund cash trends.
Yes, sir.
Any indication on why we've gone from 11 and a half million? Well, I guess we've, it shows on the chart, but it looks like we're going down. Unless I'm reading the wrong one here. The blue chart.
Yeah. No, we're actually went up 1.7 million. It's still, the 23, 24 line is above now.
Okay, I'm looking.
Just the way the graph does it.
The numbers read better, so I'll read the numbers.
Exactly.
So the chart line, the chart line indicated we was going down, but the numbers are actually up, so.
Well, we went down from last month. Cash does drop until we start collecting property taxes next month, especially in December. But, so we'll probably go down again next month, but in December, we should show an incline. Okay. No other questions? The sales tax for August was up 11.2% in the county, 3,988,540 compared to 3.5 million last August. So in the county's portion, 500, 254, which is up slightly from last August at 496, about $4,000. But sales taxes continuing to, it's on the increase this year, so, in the last few months, rest of the last six months, it's been up, so that's a good thing. The ARPA Projects report in the revenue loss, we still have 1,44,305 and 30 cents. Other eligibilities, 1,767, 769 and 53 cents for a total of 2,812,7483 cents. One thing in the ARPA Projects I want to mention, there was a motion, and we actually didn't get it in minutes, and I want to make sure we get this added. So Commissioner Mays made a motion, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge, to move the remaining funds from the other capital outlay requests back to the revenue loss. There's a little less, there's 30,000 or a little less in that. We have a PO currently committed to that, so we're going to, but whatever funds we have available in that, there was a motion made to there, so I'd like to get that corrected in the minutes and added to this month's, if I can get that in motion.
Is there a motion for, we have a motion by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Would this count as an appropriate, this would not count. We can vote, voice vote this, or do you need to go to the board?
I would do a board vote.
Okay.
Yes, it's mine.
All right, go to the board and vote. 14 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
I'll try to do voice votes all the time, so you'll have to stop me.
Most Budget Committee has to be board voting. So there was no transfers this month, which is probably a first, but in Group Two appropriations, there are four from the school fund, seeking approval as a group. I can answer any questions. Dr. Perry is also here.
We have a motion by Commissioner Yeager, is that as a group? As a group, Commissioner Allen, is that your second? All right, Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to go back to ARPA funds. This has nothing to do with the motion, so I'll just wait till later and we'll come back to that.
We have a motion in a second for to approve as a group. Go to the board and vote. 14 yes, 0 no, motion carries.
Okay, Group Three transfers from the school department, there is one for $6,300 from Physical Services.
We have a motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Vandergriff. Any questions or discussion? Please go to the board and vote. 14 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Okay, under Group Four Appropriations, non-school, there are 10 of those. Commissioner Allen would like to pull out number 13. So 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11, and 12, 6 through 12, and 15 and 16 as a group, if possible.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Palmer, really quick, is that the motion as he described as, okay.
Commissioner Wondell. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Palmer, you're recognized.
I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the justification for item number 12, this is a one-time transfer of funds to cover projected shortages in two accounts. Do you know what two accounts that is?
She did put two accounts on there, but she only listed one account, so I'm assuming that is just the only one account in the data processing equipment.
Okay, okay. So just, could we get some more, maybe better details in the explanations?
Yes.
And also, you mentioned earlier about an auditing process. What all is covered under that auditing?
All the funds, sorry.
Even the library boards?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, I do request detailed explanations, and I get them sometimes and sometimes I don't.
I know, I know. Maybe if you could ask again, please. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Yeager, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'd like to go at number eight, the jail medical, and I'd like to ask Commissioner Vowell if we have any update on the progress or changes of the gentleman who's in this item.
So in number eight, chain, I moved $86,970.40 of revenue that we had received from the state for emergency prisoner.
We can tell, I guess I'm asking if we're going to continue with...
I'm not sure, Commissioner Yeager, what question is, I apologize. Are you talking about the inmate that's been confined in the hospital for a long duration of time?
Yes.
I don't think these are those bills.
No, that code is actually...
But I guarantee you, sir, when those bills come in, we will certainly have a conversation about it.
Okay.
And I will certainly address the situation with the entire board.
Appreciate it.
So they'll know exactly why we're having to pay that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
We've already spent almost the majority of that budget code, so I'm just moving money in.
Yeah, this is just...
Was in that revenue code?
This is just everybody else.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got a motion in a second on the floor. Any other questions or discussion? Hey, go to the board and vote. 14 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Okay, and number 13 is from the library board, specifically Norris Community Library. It's for $2,556, increasing revenue and increasing data processing equipment code, $2,556. It is from a technology grant to purchase technology items for the library.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Anderson, and a motion in a second by Commissioner Vandergriff. Commissioner Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question here as well. Does, is this something that will be covered under the maintenance of effort? So for instance, I have something here from Mr. Ritter that says if we forfeit or do not meet maintenance of effort, that the books, materials, and computers that are purchased with state and federal funds could be taken?
That's a possibility. I'm not sure what this...
Okay, so this is something that would be...
This is federal through state.
Affected by...
It could be, yes.
Maintenance of effort, okay.
Possibly. If we reduce funding for the libraries, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Anderson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, yeah, this is a grant that I think every library in the state that has a relationship with the state library applies for and gets. And so they have to, they have to meet certain criteria for the equipment they buy and then possibly teach some courses related to it. And so I'm pretty sure that it has, we have to follow the MOE to not have to give the funds back.
Got you. Any other, all right, Commissioner Vowell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if I understand Commissioner Anderson correctly, Mr. Chairman, what he's saying is funding this will increase the maintenance of effort.
No, it does not. The maintenance of effort is involved around the revenue that the county provides from the property tax.
Okay.
So it doesn't.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Got you.
If we were, what Denise, Commissioner Palmer was referring to, if we reduce the property tax, then we are breaking the maintenance of effort and the state could pull those items that they have paid for, the federal, state and federal money.
So this motion is not tied to the maintenance of effort?
Not at all.
Thank you.
The MOU is what I should have said, with the, not the funding, but the agreement we have with the state that will...
All right, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Any other discussion? Please go to the board and vote. 11 yes, 3 no, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Group Five Appropriations that affect the general fund and assigned fund balance, there was one from the juvenile department for $4,592.50 for new scanners in the department.
We have a motion by Commissioner Isbell for approval, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Commissioner Yeager.
Thank you. I'm not opposed to this, but the current scanners are at least 10 years old, and that kind of bothered me that they're all being replaced at once and they weren't all 10 years old last week. So I would like to see a little better inventory control than replacing 10 at a time, or 6 at a time, I'm sorry.
Any other, any other discussion on the motion?
Any IT purchase too, we do have approved by the IT director, and he did approve these purchases as well. But a lot of, in my opinion, a lot of scanners are obsolete now because we are able to use our copiers to scan, you know, fax, everything, so we don't, not many departments buy scanners as much anymore. Apparently, the juvenile department really needs them because of...
I think those scanners were installed by me. Seriously. Long time ago. All right, any other questions on the motion or discussion? Please go to the board and vote. 13 yes, 1 no, motion carries.
Okay, under Group Seven, under Group Six Transfers, non-school, there were none. Group Seven Miscellaneous, Section A, there was a grant application from the Election Commission to apply for a state computer grant, and just for application only, and that was approved by the Budget Committee, and we'll need to vote on that today as well.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wondell for approval, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Go to the board and vote. 14 yes, 0 no, motion carries.
Okay, under Section B, New Business, there was Budget Amendments 15 and 16, which were already approved. And honestly, I think there was another grant application that the opioid abatement council that, for 500,000, that Judge Spitzer came and talked about, that was just to apply for the grant, was approved by the Budget Committee as well.
We have a motion to approve, motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on that? Please go to the board and vote. 14 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Okay, that's all I have for the budget agenda. Commissioner Wondell, do you want your ARPA question?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Robbie. Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate, in the Fire Commission, we did approve the last three fire department rescue squad ARP fund requests out of the 11. Eight has already been processed, if I'm not mistaken. The last three were, I believe, Claxton, Clinton, and Andersonville.
Yes.
And the Fire Commission approved those three unanimously. We just didn't have a quick enough turnaround time to get it to the Budget Committee for the Thursday meeting we met on Tuesday. So what would be your pleasure, Mr. Chairman?
Is there a, I mean, I'm happy to entertain a motion to add it to the agenda?
No, I'll make a motion to add to the agenda.
Okay, Commissioner Wondell makes the motion, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You want to go Purchasing Committee?
Yes.
Are you good, Commissioner Wondell, with that being in the Fire Commission report?
Uh, yeah, that's good. Okay, I'll just...
Huh? Right, we added it to the agenda. Yeah. Under the Fire Commission report. Commissioner Isbell.
Oh, I just want to take an opportunity, while we're talking about budget, to commend my commissioner, Commissioner Vowell, for his due diligence and his dedication to the Budget Committee. I know he spent a lot of hours, especially on Budget Committee Day, you know, here talking to the mayor and the finance director and everybody involved in the finance department. I mean, he was always, and I want to commend him for his effort. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, under the purchasing report, selection of a chairperson, Commissioner Palmer nominated Commissioner Yeager for chairman, and Commissioner Palmer is the vice chairman for the purchasing committee. Commissioner Isabel dropped off the purchasing committee. I'm not sure how long you've spent on that committee, but I would like to thank you for your service on that committee.
Since 2010.
Since 2010? So he's no longer on that committee, so that, which opened the election...
Yeah, I'd like to thank him too, because his institutional knowledge of some of the older contracts was so helpful when we went to go vote.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So there was only one item on the purchasing agenda, Major Clarity by Paper, the Board of Education ACCTC contract. It was a three-year contract for renewal options. It was, Commissioner Mays made a motion to approve and forward to County Commission with a recommendation for approval. Commissioner Palmer seconded the motion, the motion passed unanimously pending Law Director approval, which he has approved since that meeting, so...
Is there a motion to approve the contract? We have a motion by Commissioner McCamey. Seconded by Commissioner Wondell. Any discussion? Seeing none, go to the board and vote. 14 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you.
And just really quick, on the finance report, it was added to the committee, to the report, I mean, to the agenda, sorry, regular agenda. I know that's not custom, but the vote on the fund balance, I just felt it was necessary to add it to our regular agenda for discussion.
That's fine.
Commissioner Vowell?
I'm not hitting.
I wonder, I mean, you have literally popped up on this screen so many times.
Maybe I'm breathing too hard. I don't know.
Just knock twice if you really do mean it.
Okay, the Finance Committee meeting minutes. We also elected a new chairman. The Finance Committee has always had a vice chairman. It's one of the committees that has elected a chairman and a vice chairman, and normally they serve one year and then the vice chairman goes the next year. But Commissioner Yeager served a couple of years due to COVID, so, and the mayor was the vice chairman, so we did have a motion from Superintendent, Rose Superintendent Long to elect current vice chairman, mayor to the chair, and Commissioner Wondell as the vice chairman of the Finance Committee, yes. So those are our new chairman and vice chairman. And Commissioner Yeager, I appreciate all the work you did on the Finance Committee. And we didn't meet off a lot in the last two years. We are doing quarterly meetings now, because sometimes we don't have an agenda item, so we were canceling meetings every month. But we are working on a lot of policy right now. We did a lot of policy work this meeting and for our next meeting. I know we have that coming too. So we even had a homework assignment in the Finance Committee with the travel policy, because we're getting ready to update the travel policy, which is much needed, so that will be coming in three months, just as an FYI. But the capital assets and controllable assets, we did change a couple of policy items here. The biggest change on the capital assets are now at $20,000 from $5,000 with a three-year lifespan, and the controllable assets now are $5,000 to 19,999 with a one-year lifespan. You can imagine at $5,000, doing capital assets, we were having a lot of, created a lot of work for the purchasing office and finance. And also, it just left the door open for a lot of audit issues because, you know, sometimes you don't catch those smaller items. So this will help out a lot with the, with, with capital assets. And this was a recommendation by audit and CTS. A lot of counties are already at this level, so I think it was a really good move for the, for the asset program. The next thing we discussed was the wireless device policy. It was deferred to next meeting. But there are going to be some changes on there and some added language in the wireless device policy, but we'll take that up in, in our next, in our meeting in three months. And also the fund balance policy, which does affect county commission, because you know, on the cash and fund balance report, we always put any two-thirds vote over 5.5 million. And there was a motion made to increase the fund balance policy to $6 million going forward, and that passed unanimously. And I do feel like that should be a commission vote if, to pass that in the fund balance policy. That helps us with our bond rating, borrowing money, a lot of, I mean, it's always good to increase that fund balance policy when you can. And we consistently been over 10 million for the last couple of years, so increasing 500,000, I think, is a good step.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Wondell to increase the 6 million, seconded by Commissioner Yeager, any discussion? Any questions? I would go to the board and vote on this one. Fourteen yes, zero no, motion carries.
Okay, and we, like I said earlier, we gave a small travel policy update to bring back to next meeting, and kind of an Anderson County financial review during the meeting. But that was the finance committee in a, in a nutshell there. Any questions?
Thank you, Robbie.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Next, Director of Schools, Dr. Tim Parrott.
Thank you, Chairman Mays. It's always an opportunity and an honor to come and talk to commission about the great things Anderson County Schools is doing. I hope you all got a chance to read the report. There's a lot of good information in there. Just a couple of shout-outs and a couple of things I'd like to mention. Lake City Middle School, they went to the state volleyball tournament for the first time in history. They come in sixth in the state, which is great considering they were up against a lot bigger schools. CHS volleyball was district champs this year. And Anderson County volleyball, they are heading to the state this week. They leave on Wednesday. And then Norris Middle School football team, they won their division with an undefeated season. So a lot of good things with that. And just a few things that, that you may not know about, but some things that I think that we do when we look at the whole child. Because we have a full-time nurse in every school, the first nine weeks, we had 12,381 clinic visits. Out of those visits, though, 95% of those students returned to class. If we didn't have a nurse in that school, probably a biggest portion of them would have been sent home. And so that is a great opportunity for us to help those. Social services, our student social services works with our local schools and churches to make sure that we have shoes and clothes, closets in all of our schools. They also have a grant to purchase other, other items for families in need. Mental health right now is a big need in our school system. We have social workers, we have student support workers, we have mental health workers, and we also worked with Ridgeview, and we still don't have enough help. We did get a grant to hire four more mental health workers, and I want to thank Anna Hurt for working on that. But through COVID, our students, really and truly, our middle school students, it hit them the worst. They really and truly, they were at that point where they were just getting, kind of opening their wings, and COVID really shut them down. And the, the interaction with other people, they didn't have. With high school kids, you know, they never slowed down at all. It didn't matter COVID or anything. But our middle school, we really see a lot of that, and we are really and truly digging into that. Our counselors at our schools are working tirelessly to make sure because we can't, if that student's sitting in class and there's a big problem, they really don't worry about if they can spell or read or write because that's more important to them. So those are some things. We also partner with a local organization to help families that are homeless. We have a lot of homeless people in our community right now. And Paula Sellers with our student services, she got a group to give some funds so they could have vouchers, so we could put them up in a hotel for two or three nights and work with a lot of people. She works with a lot of organizations that will put them up to a home and try to help them get re, refitted back into the community. Another thing you might not think we have to deal with, though, and I was glad Ms. Palmer pulled that out, before fall break, we were working with agencies to help a student that was a victim of human trafficking. And I've not got the latest report on that. But here's what's happening in our communities, and in, as you know, the, the population of migrants is really on the increase. And what is happening in, they call them mules, that are getting these people to come across the border. And what they do is they wait for five, six, eight months, and then they come in and say, hey, if you don't do this, we're going to kill you, we're going to do anything. And they're scared to death because they're really here illegal and things like that. And we had a student that was going to graduate, 18 years old, and she was with her family one day and she was gone the next. And there's, and, and we've got, our people are really working hard to get her back. And, and, and so those, those don't have a lot to do with academics, but they all have, they all have an underlying incident for that. So thank you for the support you give us and the funding that we can do more than just reading, writing, and arithmetic. I'll take any questions.
Commissioner Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to have access to a database called the Destiny Database.
Yep.
Is, can you give me the information on how to access that database?
If you go to the website, go under Families, and it's right there.
Thank you. There's no special criteria?
No special criteria.
Can anyone access that database?
Anyone can access.
Thank you very much.
All right, Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Parrott, I just want to say thank you for everything you put in our packet. How we know about what's going on at different schools, and especially, Norwood Middle School had 100% perfect attendance. And you know the background, I'm talking about where that comes from.
Yes, yes. They do an amazing job down there with that.
They do. And maybe that's something that we can do across the board there. But as, you know, my two oldest children, my son went 12 years and didn't miss any days.
Wow.
My daughter missed eight over 12 years. So it's real important for attendance, and I just want to say congratulations to Norwood. Thank you.
Thank you. There, there is a meeting tomorrow at the JA building. Our local CTE directors and some directors around here, they're meeting. I think they've got 36 industries they're meeting with tomorrow to talk about further that partnership, getting those students to work.
Thank you, Dr. Parrott. Okay, I promise we will get a recess, but county law director. Jay, you can stay there if you'd like. It's up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to be with everybody this morning. Does anybody have any questions on my written report? I've got one action item. It's under section E, and that would be number two. That's the case on the voting machines. This individual filed in Anderson County Circuit Court, got it dismissed. She filed in federal court. I sent the mandatory letter, spoke to her on the phone, told her she didn't have a case that's required by the federal rules of civil procedure before you file a motion to dismiss. She actually refiled another case in federal court. That was dismissed. Then she filed in the Tennessee Supreme Court after the circuit court case, all out of procedure, after the circuit case was dismissed here. And then she filed in the US Supreme Court. And it's taken up a lot of time. She knew it right off the bat. She didn't have a case. What she alleged on the voting machines about being manipulated through the internet is not our machines. We don't have an internet module on our machines. She was basically following a template that had been given to her on these lawsuits. But I'm here tonight, today, to ask you for permission to file for attorney's fees on that one. This is a, really a waste of time, and she knew it from the very beginning. But that's what I'm asking you for.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Wells, and a second by Commissioner Isbell. Commissioner Palmer?
Do you have any idea about what that would be, what the dollar figure would be for that?
It's about 26,000.
26,000. All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
I think the item number three there, request permission to settle and dismiss the case against food cities on the operations agenda. Okay, I'll make sure we add that the mayor needs authority to sign with Robbie. We need two signatories on those forms, and they need to get down to Nashville tomorrow. Any questions on that food city settlement?
Jay, why don't you go ahead and take it up now?
Take it up now, I want to.
Yes.
It's settled, and you've got all the paperwork on the settlement amount. The vast majority of it goes to the state opioid abatement fund. But then there was 16 million that'll be split with, I think it was 30-something municipalities and counties. That's whittled down a lot. Some of the jurisdictions didn't even have a food city in their city or county limits, but we do. But that's what, you saw the funds that will be coming towards Anderson County, and we'll be getting those rather quickly. I've spoken to the attorneys, and they seem like the first check will be here before the end of the year.
Okay.
The other defendants are still in it. That's the only one that's settled so far.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner McCamey, and a second by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Yes, sir. That would be the mayor.
Authorizing the mayor, Robbie, yeah.
Have the permission to sign those forms and get them down to Nashville tomorrow. Thank you for your time. Appreciate you.
All right, we will, so Commissioner Beauchamp is not going to kill me. We're going to go into recess for 10 minutes. Please be back. It is, try to be back around five till.
You said before.
How are you, man?
Yeah.
You good today?
Mr. Lynch.
I know, bro.
Miss Miller.
What do you think, Jerry?
Great lighting, man?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he said.
Great lighting, man?
Yeah.
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 Republicans, I am a Republican, been a lifelong Republican. One of those commissioners being an independent who has since converted to being a Republican. So I didn't question it then, and I'm one of those people, if you sit back and you wait long enough, you'll see. So since then, for nine months, we have sat here, and we've heard public comments, and we've sit here and had fingers pointed in our faces, that we're not doing our job. By God, we are doing our job. We are. I don't care who likes it, who don't, what side you're on, what side you're not on. I don't care. I've had enough. Nine months has gone on. Since then, we keep getting played. I'm being played. Six other commissioners that are Republicans, and I hate to turn this into a partisan thing because we're a team up here. We are sixteen of a team. But if we're going to turn it into partisan, I'm going to turn it into partisan. Six other Republican commissioners, I don't know if you all were asked to sign on to a letter to the sheriff. I'm going to speak for myself. I was not. You can, you can speak to that if you'd like, and let, let the people, let the public know that you were or were not asked to sign on to this letter. Since then, our sheriff has investigated it. He came before this podium, and he gave us his findings. That was not good enough, so then we wanted to start attacking our Republican sheriff. So-
Thirty seconds, Commissioner Bochamp.
Sorry, my own party has turned against us, and that's fine. We're throwing out packets with misinformation. You got little asterisks by people. Commissioner Wells was not even here in February. But yet, you want to label him, and he was a Republican chairman. I'm done. I'm done. You can come to the podium. My commissioners, my fellow Republican commissioners, you stand up. You better stand up against this and stop pitting us against one another right now. We are a team, and it's going to stop today. You'll either stop, or I'm going to make it stop. We're going to decide what's best for this county as a whole, as a group, and if you want to pit each other against each other when it starts coming back, don't get your feelings hurt, don't get mad. But it's stopping today. We're a team. Sixteen teams.
It's time, Commissioner Bochamp.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McCamey made a motion to approve Resolution Number Twenty-three-Dash-Ten-Dash-One-One-Two-Six, designated Anderson County, Tennessee, as a broadband-ready community. Signed by Commissioner Wondell. Motion passed forward. Full commission for approval.
We've got a motion by Commissioner McCamey, a second by Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Val, I'm hesitant to say, is that real? Is that a-
I did push it this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Thank you, but it's not about the motion that's on the table, so if you'll just get back to me when you can.
Absolutely, Commissioner. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Motion carries.
Just before we move on, Mayor, of course, we're being asked, you know, quite a bit where we're at, and I see posts where, you know, they're making some progress broadband over the mountain. Do you know anything?
I do not.
You update.
Do not have an update, and also, I was talking to Robbie, or Director Holbergh, about this as well for Comcast, because we've not received anything yet, because we have two-hundred-and-fifty thousand set aside for them, so I know it is in progress, but I don't know at what stage, but I'll see what I can find out.
All right, thank you.
I, I do know that Highland, I mean, as soon as they got notice of award, there's a lot, they said it would be a one-to-two-year process. So there are multiple steps they have to take. Theirs involved closing a ring where they had already expanded, so I know as soon as it was approved, the next day, they were doing some of the stuff that they, they have to put in place to be able to expand it.
Yeah, that's where we've seen progress from them. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that.
Hmm.
Next is Commissioner Wondell made a motion to approve application for TNECD broadband-ready communications grant, communities grant, signed by Commissioner McCamey. Motion passed forward. Full commission for approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Wondell, and a second by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion? Any questions? Mayor Frank.
I said at operations, I'd give a little update. What is being proposed, I've been working with Mitch Loomis on this, is a grant that would offer training to seniors in the community, and then it would be a partnership with Tech Goes Home Tennessee. What this would allow, they would work with partners such as senior centers, churches, libraries, nonprofits, community organizations, to train the elderly in how to use the Internet and access. Once they complete the training, then they're eligible to keep a Chromebook, and then also get signed up for discount broadband. So that is the application that we're working towards.
Very good. All right, we still have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Motion carries.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion for the mayor to proceed forward with Anderson County lapel pin as the new logo for all employees. Signed by Commissioner McCamey. Motion passed forward. Full commission for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Was there, may I ask if there was a, any kind of code or anything tied to this, or-
What I'm going to do, Mr. Chairman, is Leanne has reached out to various vendors, and then we're going to distribute some, I guess, each of the vendors will present, like, what it's going to look like, and then I will bring that back through the committee so that you all can choose, and you may want just one version, or you may want two different ones. I'll bring that back through, and also with funding request.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Motion carries.
This concludes the action items. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say thank you to the Operations Committee for being elected chairman again.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You always want to say no to that job. Sounds like you've been in it for, like, ten years.
I enjoy it.
All right. Fire Commission report by Chairman Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fire Commission met on Tuesday, October third. The only real action item, Mr. Chairman, was a motion to approve the ARP funding for the city of Clinton, Claxton, and Andersonville. I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Wondell, and seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? Now, if this is, this funds, Robbie, have already been appropriated? All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only other item I wanted to mention, if I could, is that EMS came and recognized a chief over in Andersonville for life-saving. It was Scott Thomas who presented the award for life-saving award to Captain Brian, I hope I say his name right, Croft, Cruz? How, what's that?
Either one sound okay.
Well, I hate to butcher somebody's name, but anyway, I really appreciate it. It was a really good recognition, and I appreciate EMS and Andersonville and that chief for what he did. That concludes the report, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Okay, moving down to the Animal Care Advisory Report. Chairman Wondell.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. The Animal Care Advisory Committee met. Really, the only item that we wanted to approach was the motions, and the primary function also was to see if we can get with the mayor. I know she had some conflicts due to her schedule, but we'd really like to understand this five-point-nine-million-dollar loan that's going to be for the new shelter, and, you know, questions are, you know, how's it going to operate? How's it going to be maintained? How are we going to fund it? All those fun things. So that's the only thing I wanted to share with this body. All of us have our motions in your packet. The way the, and Jay, I'd like your opinion on this. The way we set this up, obviously, it's just an advisory committee. We do not direct the mayor, and she has forty-five days to take those motions and take actions. So some of the motions have been past forty-five days, so I'd like your opinion on what would the process be going forward after the forty-five days on motions that we have presented.
Have you asked the mayor for status on these?
We, we have, but she had, to her defense, she hasn't had time.
That's what I was thinking. She's been very busy, and I know we're both working on the loan, and that's a very important piece to this whole bigger picture. But I would recommend you just write out a memo and ask her about it. If you need some help with that, we'll be glad to do that, but I know she's very busy.
Thank you. And then, also want to mention that Sarge donated funds to fix the doors on the current shelter. There's twelve of them that had some, you know, some of them were broke and needed repair, so they stepped up and funded that repair, and it's going to be done here in the next couple of weeks. That concludes the report, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Chairman Wondell.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Rachel told me, or Nicole told me that she was at the meeting there. I couldn't be there that night, and that you had, somebody mentioned they would like to see a, maybe, maybe a concept drawing of the new shelter.
Yes.
Don't we have that? Can we share that with them?
I thought I already had, so.
Okay, I, I've got a smaller one, you know, the tabloid size. We'll get that to you, sir, and again, it's just a concept.
Yeah, yeah. Is it okay to send that to the committee?
I don't think I, I don't know if I can scan it. Nicole, can we scan tabloid? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I think that may help.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, moving down to Intergovernmental Committee report by Chairman Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Elected officers, I was appointed chairman. Commissioner Isbell was nominated and appointed as vice chair. Commissioner Val, excuse me, was appointed as vice chairman for the committee. Only action item we had was a recommendation and a motion from Commissioner Wondell to order a water use survey that impacts Bull Run community onto the Anderson County website. That being said, I wanted to ask Mayor Frank if she would elaborate a little bit on the update with the American Nuclear Site, and also if you'll touch on after that, the Bull Run Water Survey for the citizens.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Wells. At the Intergovernmental Meeting, Steve Sanders, who is the Director of Remediation for Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, came to the Intergovernmental Committee. He had appeared at the committee before and with a special meeting for full commission to talk about the American Nuclear Site, and he came back to report that they had a commitment from EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, to fund the cleanup of the American Nuclear Site to the tune of thirteen-and-a-half million dollars, and that the work would begin within six months. So this is a huge win for Anderson County, great partnership. I know a lot of the folks in this room, and then also those who came before us, right, Jay, worked on this, and so we're glad we're going to be able to, to get this cleaned up and be able to use the property, and it's going to be cleaned up to a level that will be, my understanding, no limits on use, so pretty fantastic news. And then, Commissioner Wells, your other request, we just were making the Intergovernmental Committee aware so that the citizens, in case they were contacted, would be aware that TDEC and TVA are reaching out to folks in the community surrounding Bull Run, within a half-mile radius of the plant. Citizens will be contacted if they have well water, even if it's water that's being used, you know, for non-drinking purposes. So it's very important that the cities, citizens return those surveys and fill that information out. If they do, then folks from TVA will come and do a water sampling, and if there are any discoveries that are made, then it would go to a whole other level of full sampling and a plan with TDEC. So that's just going on in the community. Thank you, Commissioner Wells.
Thank you, and I do want to thank all of y'all's commissioners, but especially this board. You got on the block, and y'all giving faith in me, Commissioner Wondell, for nominating me. I appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve, and looking forward to it for years to come, hopefully. I have no other business on this. If there's any questions or concerns, otherwise, we'll close out the Intergovernmental.
Okay, Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner Wells, for stepping up. You did a great job. You're going to be an asset, as you already are, to our commission, and I appreciate what you do. I know the chairman had the same question. He was in the meeting as well, and I appreciate him being in attendance, and he had this question, and Jay, I kind of wanted to ask your opinion on this. I'd like to get the cart before the horse, or however they say it here in East Tennessee, but I'd like for us to get a process in place to go ahead and figure out how we're going to request for the property to be transitioned back to Anderson County once it is clean. I know it's not clean yet. I know it's twenty-four months down the road, but I want to get the ball rolling so we can make an official statement that we, as the Anderson County, would like to have the property returned to our great county.
Thank you, sir. As soon as we get that last piece of analysis, says it's clean, there's no problems, then we'll write the letter and request it back, but if there's any problems with it, I don't think we want it. This is a fifty-year legacy issue for those that are new, and we're finally getting, seeing the end on it. Thanks, Mayor, for all your work, and I don't know how many letters I've written over the years to these folks, and how many times, but we finally got moving on it. That's a lot of money, that, that's over our estimates what they were in 2014, so that should be enough to handle it with the partnerships that TDEC has, but as soon as it's, everything's neutralized and removed, then there'll be a final analysis of that property, and when that comes back clean, we'll make the move for the title back, and I don't think there'll be any problems getting it back at that point.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd just also like to thank the mayor and Jay for all their work over the years, TDEC, and what they've done, and EPA, and of course, our great governor's done a great job helping us as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, Rules Committee report. Commissioner, Chairman Smallridge is not present, so I'm going to pass it to Vice Chairman Allen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. For the Rules Committee, we didn't have any action items, except for the fact that Dr. Smallridge and myself were re-elected as chair and vice chair. We did discuss the number of people that we would allow to speak on any topic, and our, and our decision was to allow the chairman to have that discretion, which you took, to allow that to come up as needed. So our future meetings will be scheduled as needed, and so that concludes our report.
Okay. All right, under, let's see, number six, Human Trafficking, Chairwoman Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to withdraw these minutes for incompleteness and submit for next month a completed minutes. I did not take the minutes, or, so I'm not sure who made the motions for the chair and the vice chair, so that's the issue. There's, everything else is correct, but I just wanted to submit complete, accurate minutes. So if you will allow me to withdraw this, I will submit next month. And it's an honor to serve on this committee. Thank you for your trust, and as we heard from the Director of Schools, it looks like, I'd like to commend this body for the foresight of organizing this task force. It may be something that may become very important in the future, given the current events of our day. Thank you.
All right. Okay, any unfinished business? Commissioner Val, is that you?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. If you want me to put this off, I can. I was just, what I was going to speak on earlier.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, I want to make sure no one has any confusion on, on previous comments that were made. As far as going back to the library issue with the books and everything, one of the comments that was made was, there was a letter sent to the sheriff. One of the comments that was made was, one of the signers of that letter was an independent who turned Republican. I would like for that person to stand up. Just so there's no confusion on that. As far as other Republicans being asked to sign the letter, I didn't feel I had to have permission from anyone to sign my name to it. If the other people who signed that letter want to acknowledge themselves, that certainly left up to them. I'm not looking at this issue as it being a Republican or a Democrat issue. I'm looking at it as a common sense issue, with those depicted pictures being accessible to children. I do understand it's been a long time since this issue has been debated in front of us and various other committees. Didn't want it to. Was hoping we would come to some kind of resolution on it long before now, but we haven't, so it is going to continue until a resolution has come to an end. I don't think either side, really, is going to just give up, so I would certainly recommend to any library board member or any county commissioner who does want a resolution to this, take the proper action to get to a resolution. Ignoring it certainly is not going to solve the problem. As far as what the sheriff said or didn't say, he has addressed that numerous times. Matter of fact, I believe he's intending on sending his letter out again to all of us to clarify what his comments were. I think Jay's also been misquoted more than once on his comments on the issue, but I think sometimes my wife accuses me of this all the time. I hear things that I want to hear, so I'm assuming that other folks may be the same way, and when they hear someone say something or give a report, they kind of put their own twist to it, and it comes out a little different than what the one speaking intended. Other than that, I would like to make one more comment about this issue, and I don't think this was the intent of what was on the agenda for today, but since we're here, since the door was open, I'll go ahead and walk all the way through it. My opinion on this issue, and many other issues in the past, have been based on my values and what the people of the fourth district have told me their values are. I would assume that each and every one of you do the same thing when an issue was brought to you.
Thirty seconds, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. You consider it, and you do what your constituents tell you to do. I'm not going to get mad at you for representing your district. Please, don't get mad at me for representing mine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, before I recognize Commissioner Allen, I, I do, before we get down this, I don't want to get down this slippery slope. This is not something that's on the agenda. I should have recognized Commissioner Bochamp with the motion. It happened while we were voting. I, I'm not going to entertain the back and forth with this. I allowed Commissioner Val to address what I see as being a differing view than Commissioner Bochamp, just because I wanted to be fair, but if this is in relation to Commissioner Bochamp, please, I'm going to ask that we limit this. Just thirty seconds, and this is the last time.
I will withdraw.
Okay. All right. Now, under New Business, we have the change order proposal by Mayor Frank that was submitted.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I know you added it to New Business. I also have a cop, a couple copies up here for any citizens who have an interest in what was distributed. I did distribute an email on Friday afternoon, and then I put a hard copy on each of your desk this morning. This is a, I'm requesting a motion to approve a change to the Archives Witness Room Clerk Construction Project contract with GCE Construction for additional demolition. This is of a furred-out wall in the existing third-floor archive space. This will be for a net increase of one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. The architect's approval and review letter is enclosed with your packet, as well as the proposal from GE, GCE Construction. This will add no additional contract time with funds to come from other capital projects, and I have the relevant code in writing before you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner McCamey for approval, a second by Commissioner Wondell. Any discussion on the motion? It will be.
And Mr. Yeager has already approved this as well.
Thank you. Seeing no discussion, let's go to the board and vote. Fourteen yes, zero no. Motion passes. Seeing no other new business, any announcements? Commissioner McCamey?
As y'all can see, I've got my Clinton Dragon shirt on here. Last commission meeting, we had a commissioner here from Oak Ridge who had his Oak Ridge shirt on, and I was challenged to wear mine. But with that being said, Clinton, Anderson County, Oak Ridge, Oliver Springs are all in the playoffs, so congratulations, and good luck to each and every one of them, including Oak Ridge.
Mr. Chairman, roll Wildcats roll.
Okay, something tells me that Commissioner Palmer will not be discussing one of these topics, so I'm going to recognize her.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to remind you all, next week is the Strategic Planning Workshop, next Thursday from three to seven, and Friday, eight to four. You should have received an agenda, a rough draft of an agenda, from an email forwarded to you from me, and as I get information, I'll pass that on, and again, any questions or anything like that, just let me know, but just don't forget.
All right. Commissioner Van Der Groe.
We were trying to schedule a day for the opioid task force public meeting in Rocky Top at Main Street Baptist Church. We would like to do that on November ninth. Has anybody got any objection to that date?
It's a busy day. What time do you-
It'll be, it'll start at six-thirty. So if that's okay, then we'll notice that, make a public notice of that, and I'll make a social media post, too, if you all would share that information also.
Annette, did you get those particulars? All right, very well. Six-thirty. Any other announcements to come before the commission? Mayor Frank?
Just a couple of items. The Veterans Day Parade will take place in downtown Clinton. It will begin behind the Clinton Community Center on Saturday, November the eleventh at ten a.m., and then on Monday, November thirteenth, in front of the Anderson County Courthouse, we will have our Second Annual Junior ROTC Appreciation Program. This is a program honoring Oak Ridge High School Navy Junior ROTC, Clinton High School Air Force Junior ROTC, and Anderson County High School Navy Junior ROTC, and that will also be held at ten a.m. The street will be closed, ten to ten-thirty. If there is rain, it will be held in the gymnasium of the Clinton Community Center, and all commissioners are invited, as well as the public. And then lastly, one of the things I had distributed in an email, if commissioners would like to, after the meeting, maybe take a ten-minute break, and then we can walk across the street to view the Emergency Operations Center. We talked about looking at some facilities. There's also a building that's been used, back in the day, it was for juvenile, then witness, I mean, then evidence building, and for you all to see that property and those structures, you are invited to, to join us, and it'll be quick. Roger Lloyd's going to take us as well, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Once there's the meeting adjourned, how about we say fifteen minutes in front of the courthouse? At, at the entrance.
Very well. You got that.
I don't know that we're going to go in, but-
Maybe hazmat suit. Anything else? Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also want to make an announcement for City of Clinton, really with everybody, Saturday, October twenty-fourth, twenty-first, excuse me, Saturday, ten a.m. to two p.m. at J.C. Park is the hands-on for fire trucks, heavy equipment, and more. It's, everybody's involved, Sheriff's Office, Clint Fire Department, Clinton Recreation, EMS, so encourage everybody to go out for that. Again, that's Saturday, October twenty-first, at the Anderson County Fairgrounds, ten a.m. to two p.m. And then the other one I have to mention is the Claxton Volunteer Fire Department, Trunk or Tree. It'll be on the twenty-eighth, it's Saturday. I think it starts at six p.m. at Claxton Kids Palace. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Seeing no other announcements, we will stand adjourned.